All right, I apologize to everyone out there in virtual world for the late start. Executive session ran long, longer than anticipated. Just came out of executive, we'll move into the public comment portion of the meeting. Anybody's here for public comment? Probably not, if anybody has any comments, please leave it in the Facebook comment. Someone from the district will reach out to you with a response in a few days. Move on to the next item which is board discussion. We have the board minutes from the November ninth meeting. Questions, comments, concerns. All right, motion to approve those. John, seconded by Vinnie. All in favor? All right. Move on to the next item which is superintendent's report.
Okay, good evening everybody. Just a couple items I want to talk about. On tonight's agenda, I just want to mention a couple things. We have a $500 donation from the Glorisville Women's Alumni Club to be used for cop and kicks programs. Appreciate their generosity. And also, we have a $9900 donation from the Hundred Women Who Care Adirondack Foothills Chapter to be used for our backpack program. So, again, that's a huge influx for the backpack program. We're very grateful for their generosity as well. Also on tonight's agenda is, we have three employees who are being up for tenure. Bridget Plummer, middle school guidance, school counselor, proper name. Cassandra Redman, teaching assistant at Glorisville High School. And Sherry Farrell, teaching assistant at Boulevard. They have my recommendation and they come high praise from the building administration. So, I'd also like to thank Melinda Harrington and Jessica Rodriguez for efforts for Toys for Tots. Today, they took a number of key club students. I think I see some students who were with us today. Were you there? Were you there? Oh, I thought you weren't there. I saw a photograph of it. So, some key club members were there. And the distribution will be out of Boulevard School. And some information is going home as to when exactly that will be taking place, if it hasn't gone already to our students. So, we're thankful for the generosity that comes from people throughout the Capitol District for the Toys for Tots. And the Glorisville School District receives hundreds of toys over the last four years in this program. So, thank Melinda and Jessica for their efforts. Heading that up once again. An issue that the board is aware of that I just wanted to speak to a little bit is staffing shortage. I know we hear about the supply chain shortage nationwide and I hear the unemployment rate down to 4%. You would not know that if you were trying to hire as we are. We have openings in our buildings and grounds unit, our food service, our clerical aides and TAs, and of course, bus drivers who work for HFM Transportation. So, there's a labor shortage in our region that we are working overtime to try to overcome. We are putting together recruitment videos. We've been word of mouth, we've been using our social media platform to try to elicit some interest in these positions. If anybody listens to tonight's meeting, might be interested. Family members of students. If you have family members or you know somebody who may be interested in working as custodian, a groundsman, food service, clerical, classroom aide, or a teaching assistant, please contact the school district. We are going to discuss taking measures to be more competitive regionally with pay. We're lagging behind some other districts in some of these areas. So, that may entice people to come. And we're also trying to keep people because we've lost employees out of some of these units in the past to neighboring districts whose salary schedule is higher than ours. So, staff shortages is something that is making it increasingly difficult to run a district as evidenced by the shortage of drivers, which was partly due to COVID, but also due to just driver shortages in general where we had to, we were unable to provide transportation for a week. It's a real issue. It's not just the supply chain shortage that you hear about why the shelves are empty in stores. It's impacted our schools. So, if you are interested, please contact us. Also, along those same lines, on tonight's agenda is a substitute rate increase. So, we are increasing our certified, our non-certified substitutes. And we are creating a new category for retired Glorisville Large School District teachers. We will be paying them $150, I think, $150 a day for retired teachers. We do not have that category right now, so the board will likely be approving it tonight, voting on that. And also, we have raised our certified teacher rate and our non-certified teacher rate to the highest levels of region. Again, there's a substitute shortage that's brought upon by COVID. I'm sure is still impacted by COVID. But obviously, it's in the same lines with the staff shortages we see. Maybe because of never-ending continuation of benefits for people who have not worked in the last few years that we see. So, it's frustrating to say the least. Kingsborough Field update. We received a test, well, Kingsborough had test pits dug on the east side of the school, which is the opposite side from the field that is scheduled remediated. And we do not have the full report back yet, but eight pits have been dug around the current playground where that playground could be expanded. And I'm told by the contractor that there's no visual evidence of any tannery waste on that side of the building. So, that's a good thing. And we hope that the official report that we should have back by December 17th will confirm that there is no tannery waste on the east side of Kingsborough School. And we will be clear to just move forward with remediation on the west side of that building. And last but not least, I wanted to give a shout out and congratulations on a well-earned retirement to Mr. Tom Roll. For most of us in Glorisville, Johnstown, Fulton County know who Tom Roll is. Tom has covered regional news and sports for three, at least three decades now. And he's always been a great example of how journalists should conduct themselves. Kept any politics he may have, you never saw in his reporting. He's always been fair, professional, and even keeled. And many in the national news could learn comportment from Tom. So, Tom, if you're out there listening, congratulations on a well-earned retirement. And we're gonna miss you. Good night, folks. He is watching tonight. He told me today that he was gonna be watching. He didn't know he was gonna get that shout out.
Two questions? Move on to the next item is administrative reports. And we'll start with Mr. Chwaski, Redmond Middle School.
What I've just handed out to everybody is just a general summary overview of our ESUP plan for this current school year. Aligning two commitments that we have as a building. There's made some changes just to the overall process this year in terms of the format and what each school is required to do. And it reformat, reformatted into commits. So, we have made two commitments for this current school year. The first being that every child will be aged in meaningful learning that is relevant to them. The second commitment is that we're deepening connections among students, staff, and the community by creating intentional opportunities to practice and build social, emotional, and cognitive skills in a safe and supportive environment. You have there a list of the strategies that we come up with to work our way through in honor of both of those commitments. A lot of the updates that we'll have throughout the year are gonna take place at the mid-year point, which will be at the end of January, beginning of February. So, we don't have an update to number of the strategies. But I can talk briefly about what we have done so far, what is gonna continue to happen, and what we do, we do know. In terms of that first strategy, the vertical curriculum alignment, we'll be looking at assessing benchmarks for mastery at both the mid and end-year point, allowing opportunities for staff across departments, within the grade level, across grade levels, to work together with each other, to align the curriculum both horizontally, vertically, and vertically. We've created opportunity in the Superintendent's Conference Days that we've had so far this year to allow for that. This is also happening at department meetings. We'll be working with the high school Boulevard admin moving forward to create opportunities for our teachers to work with deep staff at both Boulevard and the high school to further work on that alignment vertically. The improved curricular communication. Our staff's creating a shared document that's gonna reflect scope and sequence in as simple terminology as possible. So, it's, any teacher looking at it, will have the ability to be able to connect with them regarding what is being taught and what resources are being used. So, this will improve communication within the building, between buildings, and so between our building and parents as well. As we want anyone looking to be able to know what the curriculum is without it being too difficult or complicated. That document is currently a work in progress. Some of the resources that we'll be using to use to communicate better between the school and home, obviously, we've just started using ParentSquare, which has replaced Blackboard Connect. Be able to use that to communicate with parents. The school tool, ParentBoardle, continues to be an option. We have a new website that Osama has worked diligently on helping us roll out that'll be coming out this week, I believe, Osama?
All right.
Okay. Be able to use that to communicate with parents as well. The progress monitoring of the curriculum. We're having monthly meetings where teachers are being to discuss the effectiveness of their strategies. We're using student feedback to identify the strategies that they feel are most effective. And that'll happen via surveys throughout the course of the school year. And then the principal monitoring piece, between myself and our assistant principal, Mr. Gordon, will be meeting in our post-observation meetings with staff to go over formative assessments and how, using those to monitor student mastery of standards. Our desired outcomes for the school year, we're looking to achieve outcomes here, both the survey that we do in the spring as well as state assessment data. We'll be doing a mid-year survey again at the end of January, early February, to get an idea of where we stand at the mid-year point in terms of the student, student, staff, and parent answers to questions. What we're looking to monitor this year, years past, students were asked, I'm asked to share my ideas about how to make my school better. Forty-two times disagreed with that statement. Our goal for this year is to have 30% or less of the students surveyed disagree with that statement. The question of staff, I have received adequate training to deliver online instruction. 68% disagreed. So, we are looking to get that to 30% or less as well. I think that's something spent a lot of time on the past year and a half. We've had no but to do that because of the pandemic. So, we should meet that. Family question, teachers regularly inform me about how my child is doing academically. 53% disagreed, and our goal is to have that percentage down to 35%. We'll also be using our Fontis and Pennell reading levels, mid-year I-ready assessment in both math and ELA, as well as our achievement index scores on the New York Testaments in grade six through eight for both math and ELA as well, on our eighth grade science proficiency level. The second commitment, deepening connections among students, staff, and the community. First strategy, extending opportunities for students to engage with one another. Our SD Cup initiative is one of the big ways that we're gonna achieve this. We had our big kickoff event November 23rd, the day before Thanksgiving vacation. We'd hoped to do a building-wide event, but due to the COVID protocols, we had to do grade-level assemblies throughout that day, but it still achieved the desired goal. We'll be using Google Forms to assess student responses to our activities throughout the course of the year. Second strategy, targeted efforts to increase participation in after-school club athletics. You know, so far, anecdotally, our sports participation at the modified level is dramatically increased from previous years. We had 48 boys try out for modified basketball this year in grades seven and eight. They kept 28 players between the two teams. We had 28 girls try out for the girls' teams, which is an improvement over years past. They've struggled to field two teams in the past handful of years. Obviously, we didn't have the modified sports last year, so we're comparing our data going back two years. Twenty-eight students that are in swim program right now at the modified level as well. And within that, we've targeted specific students who we identified as being at risk, encouraged them to sign up and participate in those sports. I don't wanna, you know, go through names. We went so far as having counseling support staff sit with the student, contact the parents, make several attempts to get in touch with parents to get their permission to allow their child to participate, walk them through the sign up for it, through family ID, and help fill out those forms so that we can get the kids to sign up. I know the number of them made the team and have been showing up, and their attendance has improved. We're seeing better attitude and behavior out of them already, which rate. In terms of club activities, we created a new club this year based on student feedback. We now have the GMS Alliance. They just formed in the last month. They've had one meeting. We had over 20 members attend that first meeting. Our Builders Club, which is the junior key club, middle school level key club group, community service organization, participation in that is up. We've had four fundraising initiatives that have had anywhere from 15 to 20 students attend. We had a Saturday citywide cleanup that 23 of our students attended and participated in, which is awesome that a Saturday, 23 of our kids gave up their time to go and do that. With the fundraising initiatives, they raised $100 to donate to the loft. So, we're seeing kids being more involved extracurricularly across the building and within our interscholastic sports. And we'll continue to monitor that as the year goes on and hope those numbers continue to go up. What we're seeing, you know, as a result of that already is a decrease in discipline issues across the board. And this third strategy, embedding ACL opportunities into the curriculum. Creating time within the schedule for things like learning circle with our counselors, social workers, and outside agency supports. Did a week-long event, coming back from Columbus Day. We're each morning, at the beginning of the day in Hore, we did a series of social, emotional learning prompts. The first day, we did a Tell Me Tuesday where students wrote one thing I like about GMS. On Wednesday, we had students make a wish for their future, which we then linked, were links in a chain. And on the gathering area there, those links have been hung up. And then on Thursday, students wrote down what they were grateful for. Pumpkins, and that's what's on those windows. Those are also hung up within the grade level, you know, as well. Some of the feedback from that event, students. One of the prompts by students, "Love GMS. I love how much we show our school spirit. Love how kind the teachers are and how they make my day in the morning. They are dancing in the hallways. I appreciate the amount of creativity around me, how nicely teachers treat their students. My teachers are so nice and caring. They're the best." Those are specific responses from our students, clearly indicating a change towards the more student-centered environment that we're striving for here at the middle school. You know, so we'll be using student survey results throughout the year to engage the effectiveness of those efforts. And also looking at our student discipline data through, obviously, last year being a bizarre year in terms of attendance, our discipline numbers were way down. But comparing this year to the 1920 school year, through December 6th that year, we had 483 discipline referrals. Same time this year, we have 312. So, that's a dramatic decrease in the number of overall referrals. Most heavily in the defiant and subordinate numbers, 1920, at this point in the year, we had 100 through those, and at this point this year, we have 74. So, we almost cut that number in half. We are seeing an uptick in some of our more severe non-discipline behaviors, maladaptive behaviors. So, overall, there are less of them. We are seeing tends to be more severe, which is something we've identified and expected with the events of the past year and a half. We're working to continue to identify and work those students and provide the necessary supports and social, excuse me, social, emotional learning opportunities. Well, the fourth strategy, increase engagement opportunities with families in the community. We've done two formal street teams already with the building. Our groups of staff have broken up into teams, identified students at each grade level to go make home visits to students that were having, haven't been coming to school. Their attendance is inconsistent at best. Parents have not been answered, phone calls, emails. So, we've gone to their houses with our staff. We've brought teachers with us for the first time this year and scheduled them around teachers' playing time so that they can come and see firsthand what some of our students are experiencing and going through at home. We've also identified members of community agencies. We brought a current district attorney and two hopefuls to replace him as district attorney with us on our most recent one. And I, it was pretty eye-opening for them as well and productive. And student attendance for those particular students we've targeted has improved since those official street teams. We're also doing home visits informally as needed. At the week, our counseling staff pair up with the teacher or other support staff member and go to the houses of the kids. We're able, you know, contacting and getting in the building. Some of the other plans for this, you know, our open house format to be changed, having evening events for families. We've had to adjust and sort of put on the back burner burner due to the COVID protocol. It's something we'll continue to look at and monitor as we move forward and try to create opportunities where we can safely have members of the community in the building at night, provide them some sort of instructional piece while providing them food as well. End of the year outcomes for our second commitment. Again, the survey will be a big piece of this. Students do not threaten and/or bully each other in school. 50% of students agreed with that statement. Our goal is to improve that to 70% or more. The same question was asked of staff. 50% agreed, and our goal is to improve that to 60%. And the same question asked of members of the community, parents, only 42% agreed. And our goal there is to arrange, improve that to 60% or greater as well. And we'll also be looking at our participation in clubs and extracurricular events, looking for a 10% improvement in those numbers in the course of the school year. And I think we're well on our way to achieving that just based on where we are right now. And then parental attendance and events, to have 30% improvement in that. It's gonna be a little more difficult to achieve this year just given the limitations we have. But that's where we're at with our implementing ESUP for the school year. If anybody has any questions?
I only have one question about the basketball thing. It was pretty remarkable the amount of kids that signed up. Are, do you know if the teachers or coaches are doing anything with those kids that didn't make it? That's a lot of kids, that's 20 kids, right?
Yep. I know a number where we're all given the option. We worked with the swim program.
Yep.
And gave those students the option to join the swim team, even though that season had already started. I believe 10 of those students took ESUP on that.
That's awesome.
And joined the swim program, so they'll be participating.
Do you have intermarials, the time available?
We also have intermarials. We're doing those four days a week, Monday through Thursday, which is not something we've been able to do for a number of years. We've done soccer, volleyball, and dodgeball started today. It's the first day of dodgeball. We have 35 kids in the gym. By the end of the week, we'll have over 50. Participation has been great as well. Things are moving in the right direction for sure.
It's a pretty cool snowball fight out between these teams. Let's go on something in your hands.
Vinnie, I appreciate your data. A lot of the information is really good. The increase in student participation in after-school clubs and athletics is critical. I don't think, you know, you don't have to be an educator to realize that being part of the bigger yourself is going to parlay into more confidence and belief self. So, I think that's huge. I hope you keep doing it, especially getting those students who've been at risk and sending down them and their parents and getting them involved. Attendance continues to be an issue, I know, in the middle school as well. And that would be my own recommendation is to continue addressing attendance because nothing is more critical to a student's academic success than being in school on a regular basis. And I know we have far too many middle school students who are already chronically absent. But great job, you and Rick, who are doing it, and your staff. Really excited to see this continue.
Thank you. Next report is from Bernadette Callender, Principal of Elementary, King'sboro Elementary School.
It just went to sleep and reset. Okay. So, Kingsborough, right now, we have 322 students that are currently enrolled. Our pre-K classes are filled. In kindergarten, our average class size is 22. First grade is 17. Second grade is 24. Kindergarten and second grade are pretty full for the space that we have within those classrooms while adhering to some of our regulations currently. Our weekly attendance, this is just to look at how things are going by each grade, including pre-K and K, with those not being required but encouraged. And, you know, this particular area, which I'm gonna show in the next slide, was where we were really impacted by our quarantines. So, if we look at it at a monthly level, and this dipped down as a building, this, we had pretty significant quarantines across the board in kindergarten, pre-K as well. We had the class out there as well. So, pre-K, kindergarten, first grade, and second grade had significant impacts due to our quarantines, whether it be as a, within-school quarantine requirement or outside. So, this has impacted us and continues to be an area of struggle as we look at some of our scores, as well as how we're combating our attendance concerns. So, attendance supports, what are we doing? We're coordinating our efforts with James Carter, LaShawn Hawke, and Ayesha Diak to reach some of the families, to talk with those families. We're also having our letters that are home, phone calls, frequent phone calls. We're doing home visits as well. And we're working with the school success room, with DSS. Again, our struggles lie mainly in quarantines causing from in and outside of the school setting. And our instruct supports to combat that vary based on family needs. So, we are delivering materials if needed, we're streaming if needed. It all depends on each individual student and case to best support, still getting the instruction and continuum of education going. So, what's happening? Things, a little bit of, you know, our readers, we're having fun. Community connections, we had the third department come. We've also gone and done a visit. The second graders were there in the month of October. We've had high schoolers come down to be a part of some of our events that we've had, doing theme unit fun as well. First grade all did a BAP day with some of their science units that we're focusing on. So, which was really fun. We also have reading with Finn every Friday. So, this is our school conference. This is our school counselor, Mrs. Bowman, who has Finn come in. Students also are encouraged to write, if they can write letters to Finn throughout the week when he's not there, and put him in the mailbox. We have still, you know, encouraging our partnerships and our collaboration with kids to interact with one another and have time waiting for the buses, since we have those bus struggles as well that impact us every so often. We're still all smiles with those masks, and we have our monthly character awards too, which is something that our school counselor does through her weekly lessons. These are our ELA results, and they are based on our FMP scores. So right now, we not have kindergarten, it has not been assessed, that'll be later on. First grade, no, meeting expectation, yes, it's lower. Second grade meeting expectation exceeding, not where we want to be, but it's quarter, you know, it's the first quarter, and we're still combating attendance concerns as well as the pandemic of last year, and the everybody remote and then hybrid of last year. So it's work in progress, and it's just quarter. So this is our I-Ready reading results. Again, you know, we're seeing that across the board, that it's, we're not quite where we'd like to be. We're being on or above grade level. But again, first quarter, and we're looking at ways to support those students who are not. Here's our math results. And we're seeing over numbers. But what are we doing because of it? So we have tutoring programs going on, academic tutoring program began. They are happening actually four times a week, but in groups of two, and those students were selected by classroom teachers as well as AIS teachers that need additional support. We have our school-based support team. This can be a more formal process or informal check-in as well. So we're looking at supporting students with behavioral, academic, and social-emotional concerns, and we're creating targeted goals to support the areas of deficiency. These can be monitored through classroom teachers, AIS teachers, as well as our TAs too, that are doing intermittent instruction, head reinforcement of skills to kind of close our gaps and support those deficiencies where we see them, and use every little piece of time we can. We have TA and AIDS support integrated into our core instruction time for management and reinforcement of skills. With the shift from hybrid to this year, with so many more within the classroom, we saw that we definitely needed an increased management support as well as the reinforcement of skills. The students have more needs, especially our younger learners, a number of needs, whether it be just academic, it was behavioral, social-emotional. So really pushing and looking at having the AIDS and the TAs go into the classroom to support those four areas, as well as provide breaks and opportunities and management and redirection to increase overall success with skills that were being taught. And then we have the I-Ready pathways that are adjusted to students' needs, so we're looking at those and visiting those AIS teachers are, both ELA and math, with classroom teachers as they meet periodically, nightly, and throughout the month. And on a behavioral, social, emotional learning level, we have check-in connect supports. So pairing students with staff for check-in periodically throughout the day to reinforce positive behavior expectations. Mostly, you know, we're looking at our positive behavioral expectations being R3Bs, be safe, be responsible, and be respectful, that coincide with PDS, our Positive Behavioral Dimension supports. And that can be, it can look a little differently, depending on each individual student's need, to engage them in enjoying school and liking school, and being a motivator to come to school, and being a motivator to engage with the academics, even though it's challenging. So they look forward, whether it be popping in or being able to leave, to go visit that person throughout the day, and that's proven a huge support to many students. We also have small group instruction. That too is coming out of our SBST meetings, and it's targeting students struggling with regulating their emotions and meeting the expectations. So if we're having a student that's having a number of behavioral difficulties, and it's specific to whether it's safety or respect, we'll be pulling some of those students to talk about and reinforce in a positive way how to, what does safe look like, what does respect look like? And then we also have our Second Steps curriculum, which is the weekly lessons that are taught by the teachers, and the school counselor is also reinforcing through her time with Finn on Friday. Here's more pictures. We had a Veterans Day wall, a wall of honor, where we encouraged community members to send in their veterans, and students got to take their pictures with a family veteran, and that was a great success. The whole layout was covered as you walked in to Kings. We had our Fall Fest as well. This was in conjunction with Halloween time too, so we were able to have parents come to the parade and be a part of the celebrating, and then students got to engage in just different fun activities through the day. Here's more. We also had Rogers Bar that came in, get cider, the apple press, and making cider too, and different activities throughout. Here's the parade. They had a lot of fun. It was a great day. And that's it. Any questions?
Thank you.
Yep, yep, yep. This is a great... Do they have music? Yes. Yep, it's one of our specials, one of the four. So we have library, music, PE, and art, so they go to PE twice per week and once, one time every other.
I have a one child that our parents are pleased to see consistency across the team that you're representing. Very similar to what my son is seeing, and our parents are being great consistency across the world.
Yeah.
I will probably try and go a bit.
Yep, we're working with that.
Excellent. Glad to see that.
Yeah.
Bernard, I think you did a nice job with your work. You did a great job so far. I know you've had your hands full with some, a few social-emotional issues to any point. It's not, it's something that we knew we were going to face this year. I know you've been busy, also with some of the staff shortages that you've had. So nice job putting this together. One thing, if I could say to young parents, this data jumps out at me, is the percentage of students behind grade level. That's the important early literacy efforts, the talk and his teaching campaign. Parents do not need to be expert readers themselves to really help their child develop a love and confidence in reading, in literacy, and will certainly partner with any parent guardian who wants to ensure their child's going to be a proficient reader. So I applaud your efforts, and I'm happy, looking at the pictures, picture says a thousand words. Looks like children are having fun at Kingsborough, and I hope parents send their children to school on a daily basis.
We've enjoyed a lot of, and we have lots of opportunity to be sure reading today, with the second major test, and we have a library, and one of the apples are about to be bought, and we bring new books that they can choose out of Ben as well. So we're always encouraging that.
Good job. Thank you. Simon, is the student board member report?
My first topic is the student parking lot doors. So I've had quite a few students ask me to bring this up at today's meeting. They wanted to know if we could reopen the student parking lot doors. I, we originally closed them as another safety or security measure, but with the snow falling and the temperature dropping, it might make it easier for students to enter the building this way, especially if they walked or drove. I would also like to mention that we, the students, appreciate the measures the district has taken to keep us and our faculty safe. I hope this is something that we can take into consideration. My second topic is the Student Liaison Committee meeting notes. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to make it to the meeting. I was absent that day. The first note was the dress code, which was brought to us by Justin Phil and Thomas Marino. They would like for any and all genders to wear whatever they would like, appropriate boundaries to show self-expression. They would like to lighten up certain aspects of the dress code, such as allowing spaghetti straps, halter tops, hats, bandanas, things of that sort. They also mentioned that spaghetti straps and midriffs are not the biggest issue, it's the amount of what showing is. We have to find certain boundaries and ways to make this happen appropriately. We also have to discuss and decide how this will be policed by administration and teachers. In a future meeting, I'm not sure if it's the next one or the one after that, but we will bring in a hard copy of the dress code so we can go through it, make some changes, and then update to make it current. It needs to be more subjective, rules need to be more concrete, so we know if it's appropriate, and it could be less of an issue. We need more consistency. Then the next one is social-emotional learning, which I like that it was in the last presentation, because it's just telling me that all schools, or more than just high school, is thinking about this, which is really good for a student's mental health. So we're going to hope that it's happening in the classroom soon. Students will name something positive that is going on in their lives or in the classroom, and they will, sticky note Tuesday, where they can write something positive on it and have it placed on the board. It seems to be cutting down, come down a little bit, but we would like to see it more. Maybe have the teachers select the groups and not the students, so more students have interaction together, create more bonds and connections with other students. This can be very helpful and beneficial to students because, of course, mental health is very important. And that's it.
I'll speak to Dr. Pelli and Mr. By about the dress code and inclusion of students and the examining that. And I will say that, you know, I'm building a high school principal for eight years, ten years altogether, it's not easy to find that sweet spot of what, accommodating kids while not losing all levels of comportment or, you know, prior, or proper attire, because unfortunately, some kids will push the envelope to the point where it's a distraction. And, but point taken, into the doors, I'll speak with Mr. Atherton, the safety officer, in light of what happened across this week in another school district, another school shooting. That's why we put that measure in place, so that we could throttle down where kids are coming in, to be safe. But I understand the kids desire to have those doors open, but they were shut in name of safety. So, but point taken, and I'm happy to hear the SEL efforts that are underway. That's great. And I'm glad to hear the students like you appreciate it.
Yeah. I think it's a very good school anxiety, things of that sort. So I like that, that it's across multiple schools and not just one.
Well, we're over the years who really have time.
Yeah.
You get a job?
Thank you.
Seriously.
Thank you.
Next item is our recommended actions. We have item seven-point-zero-one through sixteen-point-five-one. Any questions, comments, or anything that may be polled, we vote it on separately. All right, motion to approve those items. I'm Sharon, seconded by Vinnie. All in favor? Motion to go into executive session to discuss contractual items. Motion by Ed, seconded by Vinnie. All in favor? Let me know if I can take it afterwards. Thank you, everyone, for attending in virtual and in person.